Well, what hands for other people? Welcome to tonight's pre-meeting study session. And just quick before you get started, I attended the antisemitism workshop today that was from 10 to 4 in Boulder. And it had changed a couple of times because normally there's just a mayor's round table. But after June 1st, they expanded that. So lots of people presenting today and whatnot. And while there were 14 mayors from the area there. And tonight Thornton has a resolution supporting Boulder. And it would also go to any of the synagogues in each city to share that we don't support such actions. All of that happened in lightning speed. I did send it to you. Would we have permission to get that made into Westminster? So it says Westminster, not Thornton. And maybe you could have it in the pack up for next week. So people know what we sent out. But I think it's important we get that out this week with our signature that just take care of it.
Yeah, we can get on the agenda. All council is.
Need to know if anybody is against that.
I think we should definitely do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll get it done.
Thanks. Okay, next.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow up unique pre-meeting today. So thank you to council for adapting with us to make this a priority. I'm going to turn it right over to Chris Lindsay. We're going to talk about the potential for ballot measure and a potential for polling. So.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Excited to be here and get rolling on this project. Good evening, City Council. Chris Lindsay, Assistant City Manager. I'm joined by Aaron Fariter, Policy and Budget Manager. Also joined by David Flaherty of Magellan Strategies. Magellan Strategies performed a community survey on funding improvements for fire departments a year ago. And per the direction last week regarding the rapid option, we brought him in this evening to talk about the potential of doing some more polling, if so desired. In light of the time this evening, we outlined three questions for discussion this evening in the agenda memo. So I'm going to jump right into those. The first topic of discussion is to confirm the desire to poll using a consultant for a November 2025 combined fire and streets infrastructure ballot measure. Staff heard last week that you want to do a poll. We wanted to confirm that this evening. So you can begin to work on that. Any objections?
I'm a no.
A few questions about that. I guess what is the timeline for the poll? How many folks would we be polling? And what is the difference between this poll and the last one we did last year?
Do you want to speak to a timeline?
Absolutely. Typically, the process will last about 30 days. However, we intend to follow up next week with a questionnaire per direction from staff and direction from them. The last survey, we interviewed 1,500 voters and residents. I would, we will definitely hit that same goal. A larger sample size allows us to drill down by voter populations. That group can really understand. The other difference between this time and last time. One is the economic environment. Property taxes are most likely to be not received well in the survey, just like last year that we measured. But also the fire season, people's attitudes towards inflation, their nervousness around, with all due respect, the local economy. We need to re-measure those things. But introducing the road funding is a different component now. I saw from your community meetings and outreach that you have a need for local roads, not major materials. So sort of having a co-mingled measurement on this survey would add new information to you to see if voters, you know, right now in an undefined amount and what that text may look like. Measuring two separate sort of city needs versus just fire and the new stations and where they would go and the similar sorts of needs.
Counselor Demott?
Specifically, besides the difference, I mean, I understand, you know, the environment is different. We're adding some components. I think more what I'm interested in though, is the fact that what was brought back last year said that was very favorable and it quite frankly, did not end up very favorable when it went to the voters. So with that being said, will there be additional questions in terms of measuring against last year to try to figure out why it failed versus this year?
Can I speak very frankly about why I thought that it did not fail? And I did meet with a consultant afterwards in the election. Multiple things occurred on that effort that did not materialize. Now, believe me, we're a polling firm and we have a track record. And support levels will not materialize despite the strong measurement of the fire. You know, your fire department, everybody liking it. With all due respect, you only had $60,000 for a campaign that needed much more money to actually get out the messages, number one. Number two, there was not support from a unanimous council or near to make unanimous council. That really matters. In fact, I live right up the road in Broome Field. And me and my team did not see much of anything with regards to what's going on. Now, that's just an observation. But I feel that in all, with all due respect, that the effort was underwhelming. In comparison, we did West East School District where we had a 71% approval rating. And it landed exactly at 71%. And just as a comparison, you had a unified school board. You had a retiring superintendent Pamela Swanson. Now granted, that was only 30,000 voters where you're much larger than that. But I would just compare in your community, another effort that did achieve success at the level we'd measured, just as a comparison. So go ahead.
But now, to me, you hit the nail on the head. And I think it's important. I do think that you have some opportunity to ask some specific questions to measure against last time. But we spoke about this before. And I think through the council at the time, you know, this is why the process, we've really hammered on the fact with city manager that we need to get ahead of this and be able to educate the groups. And I think the other thing, and so this isn't necessarily the polling, but this is back at staff to, you know, double down on my point that I made. And now I have some extra data to say that I'm not wrong. We need to get those stakeholder groups in. And I mean, so whatever data we can get to them in time. And, you know, Citizen Academies, our fire union, you know, any other groups that make sense. There's community groups out there, our Civic Academy. You know, all those different groups that understand what we do as a municipal government need to understand why we have these needs. Because I feel the same way. I feel we didn't have time. There wasn't a good effort. We could not get the support of council. There were some of us who wanted to support it. Even though, quite frankly, we felt behind the eight ball too, as far as when it was brought to us. I think that was probably partial, in my mind, part of the reason why not everybody wanted to get on board with it.
You were never included in any conversation. And that's not your fault. I'm not saying that's your fault.
I understand, Mayor, 100%. It's okay.
I've run enough campaigns. You've got to have that citizen campaign piece. And my voice was as if it was never mentioned, so.
So those, yeah. And so to close my thoughts on it, you know, I'm in favor. The more data points you can grab, especially to compare it to last time. And then we don't have a lot of time. So those other efforts need to parallel, especially because once it's, you know, once we hit August and it's an actual thing, then it limits what we can do. So that education piece is so important to do right now.
Counselor Camelia, did you have something else?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say, I'm only in favor of this because the results give us a milestone with which to turn about face. To your point, if in case the economy has done such a number on our community that the results show that they are absolutely not in favor, then it gives us a point with which we can pause. We can decide to pursue this next year or pursue other paths. But to Counselor Demott's point, for the, I hesitate to want to do this because the stakeholder outreach is so important and we have to get on that immediately. And we need all the time that's possible to be doing that. And so I'm kind of hoping that this polling can take that into account and incorporate some of that education and communication somehow. And I guess that might be more to staff's direction. But somehow make sure that we're getting the word out at the same time. Because a big part of me wants to skip the polling and just get education to the community and get the message out that we're doing this. But anyway, I am in favor of the polling because it gives us a point. But let's just start that education immediately.
The only other thing I kind of say and tail end of the points we just heard, the polling also, I'm assuming is going to direct some of what the ballot would be, what kind of tax, you know, they would be open to. So I think that's the other part I would just say I feel is important. I will tell you, the most telling point to me, and I brought this up before, is the life safety thing. We didn't hear that last time. I mean, the whole four minute response time, that was not front and center. And I can tell you, I've already been out to doors this year. And I've let people know this is an issue. You're probably going to hopefully see a tax initiative. And when you portray the fact that there's a life safety issue, especially when you go up to the area that is impacted, I have not heard anybody say anything but that makes sense. So, you know, I think that I would want to make sure that as far as the police or the fire component, that that is the front and center issue. To me, that also goes with roads. I mean, at the end of the day, you can't get there if we don't have good roads. So, you know, those two things have been well received with the folks I've talked to so far this election cycle.
Mayor Potem.
Honestly, I'm just underlining what Counselor Carmelia and Counselor Demott said. I, the only question I have is, are we changing the polling questions at all?
We are. And I would just say one other thing. The attempt last year was sort of a combination community survey where we asked questions, top issues and things like that, per the direction of the past city manager. This time, you know, we can still measure those if you have an interest in there. But to also include a proper amount of respondent education around the road needs and, you know, what will happen and exactly where the money will go. That's how it'll be different. I would assume we'll dial back on that. However, if there is an interest in consuming that to measure, you know, you know, top issues and things such as that, we could likely fit that in. But we're going to need to introduce the full road education and around that. And also have information, you know, presented to respondents about the state of the roads, whether or not, but, you know, we're not leading them. We're asking them the conditions of the road and their community. So that's a big thing. Roads are slightly different than fire safety, even though the new stations and the refurbishment, the way your city is, you know, a good ballot measure or at least easier ballot measures. There's something in it for everybody and it will improve their community locally as much as the city as a whole. And so we're going to need to work that in. At least that's the plan. And but your input is obviously 100% looking forward to having your thoughts and feedback. But that'll be the attempt at that time.
Yeah, I like it being more targeted. Counselor Zodi, did you have something?
Yeah, so yes to all of that. And I would say that I'm in favor of polling because we need the right questions. Right? That's really what we're trying to get to, right? It's to get whatever cycle, so, you know, psychosocial behavioral, you know, efficiency on the question and how the question is framed to the people. But to everything we're saying in terms of communication, that's not really on you anyway, right? That's on our internal. We're going to have a big plan and he's going to pull together. And to your point about the dollars that we invest in that, I just want to reiterate again, we need to invest a lot of money if we need to scale. Because I agree with the community groups, we need to, the stakeholder groups. But we need scale also. And to do that, we need a multi-faceted campaign to actually hit a lot of people and educate them as to why. That education piece won't be seen if it's one, one medium, correct?
100%. And one adjustment too, from last year. We moved very quickly last year. We prefer to actually have the exact ballot language in its ugliness under Tabor's rules in there. We did not do that last time. And that's okay. We do our best effort. And at times when it's paraphrased, you know, and if we're doing a sales tax, it will begin, shall taxes be raised? And we want to see what voters think when it is, you know, north of 20 million, you know, because that's a better measurement. And it's okay. Like there's times where just the language isn't ready and we're using the poll then to do that next step. But I can hear you loud and clear that we're trying to move along very quickly. And believe me, we can move very quickly. The questionnaire design phase typically is what takes the most time. But I hear you loud and clear, sir.
Counselor Ireland?
Well, I have a different perspective. Four minutes is a luxury in America. And everything this city does is a luxury. Because when you're in rural America where my husband went and lived, it took 30 minutes for the fire department to get to you. His grandparents lived till 90s. So I'm not saying it's not ideal, but it's not reality for most people. So we've got to remember that, that people are hurting financially. And this is a progressive tax, sales tax. And Adams County is going to be over 9%, 9.35. That's a bite. That's doing your buy in a car. And I've heard people that can't even afford a motorcycle to even license their motorcycle. So I hate to be a debit downer, but there's two views to this. And we got to live in reality of people's finances.
Counselor Demott, before, I just want to share my, everything that's been said. However, we haven't talked about, is any of this going to be bond for the building? And is any of it then going to be mill for filling what we built? That was never ever discussed with us last year. Nothing was discussed with us last year. And that's what's so difficult. And we don't take it out on you. It's just our frustration of reality of how things worked last time. And we don't want it to happen again. So that's the reason we're trying to be very proactive this go around. So that's an easy ask to our bond house to know what those costs would be. Can we do it? I don't know if we're at our max for bonds and that capacity. But it's certainly yet another way because bonds go away. Mill levy doesn't. And for, again, for education, this is what we need to be built. But we need this to keep, to be able to have somebody that uses and services our people. So that's a question from staff I need an answer to. Counselor Demott?
Well, not just in addition to what I was going to say before on the mayor's points. Because we would want the voters to understand holistically once we pay for the things we need to pay for that aren't ongoing costs. If it was an ongoing tax, what would we do with it? Some of these things are going to be ongoing costs, like roads are ongoing costs, firefighters to house stations are ongoing cost. So the end point being, the better we educate, the more that they understand that is where these initiatives are successful. You pointed out school districts. I'm typically not somebody who's for more government, but I have voted yes on taxes from schools because they've been very specific. When it drops off, what I'm getting for it, what they're going to do with it. You know, so those are all things that we want to do. And I wanted to just kind of address some of the points that Counselor Ireland made. I understand, you know, rural areas, we're not a rural area. And this is something that is an option that we're giving the constituents that we represent. We're not forcing it on them. This is an option that they get to vote on twice, quite frankly, because they get to vote whether or not we raise those taxes and they get to vote whether or not they go to the stores in the city of Westminster. So sales taxes are something that you have a lot of option over as a resident. And to me, the responsible thing to do is say to the citizens of Westminster, here is a real gap in services you have. Do you want to spend your money on us closing that gap or not? So I appreciate what you're saying and I understand that folks are hurting. But at the end of the day, this is up to the seven of us. It's up to the voters of Westminster. And I don't think we do them any justice if we do not properly educate them about the service gaps and what the cost would be to close those service gaps and then let them make the decision.
What else? What else do you need from us?
So Mayor, I think you started to get into one of the questions that we had. So we wanted to confirm.
So we have a yes on the polling.
Perfect, thank you. We wanted to confirm the funding mechanisms that we would roll on. I think last week there was discussion about both sales and use tax and property tax. I think Mr. Flaherty has some thoughts about the likelihood of a positive result on property tax. Maybe focusing solely on sales and use tax, if you would like to hear that or you would like to provide direction in that area.
Chris, can we also, the mayor raised bonding.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we talked about that too.
Certainly. So bonding would absolutely be a part of this with, with whatever tax that's associated with that sun setting at a certain point in time. Fire stations are items that we would need to bond for, to do them quickly. Get the funds upfront and then pay them back over time. So that would be included with a sunset. Staff and council are doing everything we can to limit the impact and the scope of that. So we've peeled off one fire station to use urban renewal funding. So we wouldn't need debt for that. And I think we're working to try to see if we can fund the fire training center with other funds as well, so we wouldn't have to utilize debt for that as well. So this is something we're continuing to, to get closer into a question.
Yeah, I don't disagree about the property tax piece, but I still think probably it needs to be asked. But, but I do think people get bonding because we would be able to tell them exactly what we're building and that it's 20 years and then that goes away. But what mills does it take to do that? To do the rest?
Agreed.
Yeah, I think I totally forgot about the sunset component. And I think that would be essential to be able to see, you know, it hasn't gotten. Or is that something we're asking about? Like if there's a, if we reduce the scope and we're kind of looking at the variability of the sale, you know, how much the sales or property tax might be versus the time? I don't know if we ask about that or not, but throw that out there. And then for the property tax question, I mean, did you have a concern just asking the question?
I would just say everything that we've measured this year from across the state for various needs for city and special districts and school districts. Property taxes are a tougher sell in nearly every single community when compared to other options such as, yes, sir?
Oh, no, I was going to just get in the queue so you.
Oh, okay. And I know last time very wisely, let's make sure. And as you, if you remember from last year, the sale, the property tax measurement at eight mills and then four mills was a non-starter. People were not thrilled about that. And obviously, ever since Gallagher's been re-appealed, despite the September property tax agreement and where things are, I can just share for the first six months of this year, nobody's really embracing that unless it's for a need that's dire in a community. However, I hear you loud and clear. I would just recommend this time, and I understand completely where the property tax being used to pay the debt service on a construction capital project makes a lot of sense. And that it may have a sunset tax. But all I'm saying is rather than paying it out of the general fund or other means, property taxes have just been a tough go is what I'm saying. And I was just suggesting, as we mentioned, that, you know, do you, would you like to, you know, perhaps not introduce that at all in the survey? However, I'm hearing you loud and clear, Mayor, and the rest of you, if you'd like to definitely test that. If that's a funding vehicle that you want to use to build the new station or other capital needs.
Counselor Demott?
I just reiterate what I shared last time with council. My view is I'm not in favor of doing the property tax just because I, one, I don't think that we have as good of a chance and I don't want to muddy up our questions. But I also think that it hits the, I think this is part of the reason why it's not as popular. It hits fixed income folks differently than, than the sales tax does. And then the last thing is just, and this is more for staff. When you talk about, and I brought this up before, and keep hammering until we get through this process, the stuff that is being done under this city manager's leadership and your administration in terms of what you've done that would have been part of the tax last time is really critical to show that the city's doing what it needs to do. And I think that will make our efforts more favorable to taxpayers.
Do you need, I mean, I heard sales and use tax. I heard ask your property tax question, just see how that goes. And, and then the bonding question.
Any other feedback on the questions that we asked last time? We attached those on the memo?
For me, I didn't realize accommodations had to go before the, I think that just starts muddying water when you have different things.
Same. I do have a question about what we're, what information is being included when you send the polling question? As well as what information we can send to the public? Will they receive that same information? I know we said the Westie already went out. I don't know what else we can do. But my real question here is, we've started this campaign of educating folks where we stand in the city on our property tax, which is pretty well behind just about everywhere else that's a neighbor. And my real concern with doing this this year to begin with was that we don't have enough time to continue that education well enough to really have that conversation. So to your point, it might be moot. But when you. But when you ask the questions, are we including like that graph that we all got to see several times that shows our property tax compared to everybody else? And then on the ballot question itself?
Yes.
What does that look like?
Absolutely. We have an approach where we do an uninformed and then an informed ballot measure test before and after. We can serve up images like we have in the past, which is a much more pleasant and informative experience for respondents. I have gone through the presentations that you've been presented to in the last three months. They're excellent. That is new information. I love that table showing the actual cost per $500,000 home to Brimfield and other areas showing that, you know, look, sometimes people feel like, oh, this is great, we're so much lower, people are going to embrace us. No, that's not exactly the case. However, it's not the worst information to present. But what we will do is we will measure opinions and things around this. We're going to ask questions first about conditions of the roads as well as reaffirming the need for fire service and so forth. But then we will say, you know, no decisions have been made. Your input is going to really help make those decisions. And then we will get into it. One ballot measure being considered is, you know, raising revenue to address our roads, you know? And then we will arrive at what that sales tax looks like and is, or the funding vehicle. And then I will want to drop in the actual ballot language as close as possible that we can, rather than a paraphrase. And then after we're done covering the road portion, where they're going to say, now we're going to share with you some information about why this is being considered and how the dollars would be spent. And then what I would like to do is present to them, honestly, that interactive map that you did with your town hall, where you had some red circles at different areas. That's an excellent source. And honestly, we could even serve up that image or just those concerns of those areas to the respondents because we're, we will, you know, knowing perhaps where they are because of our sample, the way we send that out. So we'll cover that up. Then we will perhaps introduce fire. And again, we can flip it, we remain in fire first before roads. And so once we're done introducing the information, we'll say, okay, now that you've learned some information about what this tax would go for and how our local roads would be addressed, would you vote yes or no for it? As a reminder, here's the ballot language again, boom. And then we ask them an open-ended question, you know, in your own words, tell us why you're voting yes, tell us why you're voting no. And then we'll say, another need is, we're going to, you know, discuss, we still have a continual need for fire safety and a capital project. And introducing again, perhaps not as many message questions as we did last time, an uninformed and informed, we're showing the actual ballot language. So that's how we would do that. But again, tying together, once I understand the amounts that we're going to need to present to fund these projects appropriately, then say, okay, what is your consideration? That's generally the way we would walk the respondent through. And in all honesty, we'll be asking staff if there are any other local ballot measures being considered for any reason, you know, I mean, whether it be a school district and so forth. And we work with a lot of local school districts here. We may do a comparison there. If this was on the ballot, how would you vote? And hopefully, we don't have a crowded ballot if you feel moving forward. Yes, ma'am?
Are you going to put the amount of the increase?
Of course, of course, ma'am. We are going.
Are we going to have different amounts or just one amount?
Different amount for which ballot or which project, ma'am?
Their project, like.
Yes, we will have information.
Incremental increases and decreases. Do you have that on there or is it all .5 like we were suggesting?
No, we always attempt to project what it will cost the actual homeowner. That's very important. A mill levy at times can be challenging because people don't know what a four mill will cost them. So we like to give them, you know, that information. And in fact, we encourage it to be in the ballot language and that is actually allowed. However, that's in the eye of the beholder of your attorneys. But yes, we are not just trying to do half cent sales tax like last time. You know, you can do the math on that. And we do put in there, you know, a five cent sales tax on a $100 purchase would cost somebody X. It's different than when we do the mill levy because we tie it back to the homeowner and a home's value. So believe me, we do not try to leave, but also we, you know, because we've been doing this for 20 years and I'm just saying, the end up, ideally what we want to do is try to hope that the ballot language that we share and the facts in that ballot language is what will eventually end up on the ballot in November. But we understand sometimes there's some wiggle room there, so. And I'm sure staff, we've talked about this where they mentioned likely it'll be less than the 5% sales tax next time. That is good practice to come back and say, we listened and learned and heard. We respect our taxpayers. That would not be the amount. But again, I'm not saying that decision has been made, but we would likely go down that road.
I would add, yeah, council's shown incredible leadership. We, you know, you've directed to fund fire station eight from the URA funds. That doesn't hit. Chris mentioned, we're working on something else where we could alleviate potentially the capital of the training facility. So I can tell you right now that if we went to sales tax, that it wouldn't be five, it wouldn't be what it was last time. It's already, we're already putting incredible downward pressure on that. And it's fitting in the context of we're doing everything we can with what we've already been entrusted with and will only ask if we need to for the residual that we can't find the room to find. That, that's what we're.
Right. And that's a very good practice. There's many times where something comes up short. Granted, odd years are more challenging than even years just because seniors and homeowners make up a larger plurality of turnout. However, you know, what, you know, city manager Andrews is saying is good practice. And to, you know, we want to be transparent and be like, we heard, we listened, we're able to find some things to lower the ask. However, there's, we're still going to need taxpayer assistance sort of thing. And having that, there's nothing wrong with having that in the survey so that respondents know, okay, this is where they're going and why.
Are you okay?
Yes. Mayor, with your permission, what we're going to do is work rapidly over the next seven days, right up until 6:30 next week, and come back next week with a draft of the survey questions. Mr. Flaherty will return.
Do you want to go with your third question real quick?
I think we got, we got through them all.
Okay.
And then we'll also be prepared to talk about an engagement strategy next week as well.
Okay. Thank you for coming and being with us.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do a project for you again. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right. See everybody at the diocen. Twenty seconds.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of June 9th, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council Meeting of June 9th, 2025. We appreciate your attendance and would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during the meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone to adhere to the following expectations. No attendee shall disrupt the meeting. Threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited. Audible expressions of support or opposition for a speaker, for any speaker are not allowed, and signs and placards are not prohibited inside the chamber. All attendees must remain seated in the designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles and blocking doorways. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during a public comment, please sign up in the lobby. That sign up closes at 7:15. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demat.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haat. Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nermela.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse Counselor Haat? Counselor Demat.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we excuse Counselor Haat from tonight's meeting.
Mayor Protem, second. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Counselor Haat tonight. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to the minutes of May 19th. Counselor Demat.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2025, City Council Meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 19th. Anybody have anything else to add or correct? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our presentations tonight. We have three. First, proclamation designating June as Pride Month. And Mayor Protem will present that.
Um, now?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. Is there anyone that is able to join me perhaps? Oh, here we go. From the inclusivity board?
Yes.
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Rich Chamberlain, a member of the inclusivity board.
Alan Farb, inclusivity board.
All right, thank you. I am very honored to present this. This proclamation means a lot to me and my family. And so I'm going to go ahead and read this. Let's see. Whereas, the city of Westminster has committed to make our community more welcoming and inclusive for all, including the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas the United States Supreme Court ruled in June 2015 that same-sex couples can marry nationwide, establishing a new civil right in our country. And whereas former President Barack Obama designated the first national monument to LGBTQ+ rights in June 2016, honoring the LGBTQIA+ community's long-term presence and struggle for equality across our nation. And whereas, all members of the Westminster community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, asexual, non-binary, and two-spirit, have the right to feel safe, not be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of harassment. And whereas, supporting Westminster's LGBTQIA+ community also aligns with the city's objective to create a more inclusive and equitable community that promotes unity and honors diversity. And whereas, the city has added protections for LGBTQIA... Sorry about too fast. QIA+ individuals with an inclusive nondiscrimination policy stating that no person shall on the grounds of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, or age be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination in any operation of the city. The city of Westminster extends this coverage to ensure that no person is unlawfully discriminated against on the grounds of immigration status, gender identity, or expression, or sexual orientation. And whereas, the LGBTQ+ community has made great strides. However, work remains in order to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month and call upon the people of Westminster to recognize and celebrate Pride Month. And we have our first... We should clap first. And I'm gonna kill the date. It's next Thursday, right? Or when we have our first Pride celebration with?
Thursday, 26.
Yeah, 26, in June.
Oh, I was thinking 16 from my head. So Thursday, June 26th, at the Butterfly Pavilion. In partnership with them, we have our first event for June Pride Month. So please join me.
Let's get a photo, guys.
Okay.
Sure. All right, we're more centered.
That's very particular.
All together now, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Counselor Carmelia will present the Immigrant Heritage Month.
All right, I'm really excited to present this. Do we have anyone joining us for Immigrant Heritage Month? Would that be the same group of two? Anyone else? I assume most of us here are immigrants, so this applies to just about everyone in the room. Thank you so much for all the work you two do. Here, you want to introduce yourselves real quick? I know you've done it just...
I'm still Rich Chamberlain, inclusivity board.
Gives me a second to look for the right.
I'm not Rich Chamberlain.
Thank you both so much. You gave me just a moment to pause and get the proclamation over here. So I'm really excited to present the proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month as this increases our community engagement and we want to ensure that all members of the community are welcome, safe, and included in our plans within the city. Whereas, generations... Does this sound, by the way?
Doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it, right? Where... No?
No, you got it.
Speak real close.
This direction.
Whereas, generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation. And whereas, the city of Westminster recognizes its rich history of immigrants who have played a vital role in diversifying our community, immigration is built in the foundation of this great nation. It is a source of the strength we hold and something we should all take pride in. And whereas, the city of Westminster is home to diverse communities and many cultures and identities. And whereas, the entrepreneurial drive and spirit of our country is fueled by the unique origins of Americans. And whereas, immigrants are an important part of Westminster's history and continue to contribute to the economy, science, academia, culture, and the arts. And whereas, immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and equal access to equal opportunity, but have campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans. And whereas, despite these countless contributions, the role of immigrants in building and enriching our nation has frequently been overlooked and undervalued throughout history, which continues to the present day. And whereas, Westminster's immigrant population adds to the variety of languages, customs, celebrations, which contribute to the cultural diversity enjoyed in the city. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim June 2025 to be Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Westminster and call upon the people of Westminster to join together to build stronger connections to our neighbors and fellow community members across the city in the spirit of our history.
All right. One more time.
Yep, we'll do another.
You want to stand in a different arrangement? Are you got the same... You got the stair?
Sure, okay. Step, step. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, Counselor Azadi for Juneteenth.
All right. Probably you too. If there's anyone else for Juneteenth, come up now. Fun fact, so Colorado was one of the first states to recognize Juneteenth, long before it became a national holiday, way back in 2004. But it wasn't until 2022 it became a paid state holiday. So an important day, and thank you guys for being here. I won't make you introduce yourselves again.
Maybe want to hear this.
I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, Juneteenth marks our country's second Independence Day. And whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Jubilee Day, Freedom Day, and Emancipation Day commemorates June 19th, 1865. And whereas, the day's name is a combination of June and 19th in honor of the date of the announcement. And whereas, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay, Texas, and announced the end of the Civil War. And whereas, it was declared that more than 250,000 enslaved black people were free. And whereas, many slave owners in the state of Texas and other states had continued to hold enslaved people captive despite their emancipation. And whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation was issued by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863. And whereas, the speech of Frederick Douglass delivered at the first annual National Juneteenth Rally in Washington still resonates with many seeking equity and justice for all. And whereas, the city of Westminster stands with all who stand for justice and humanity and celebrates our independence. And whereas, the city of Westminster condemns all acts of othering in the shape of overt acts or microaggressions. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth in the city of Westminster and call upon the people of Westminster to join together in honoring the resilience and contributions of African-Americans in our community and across the country. Signed, this 9th day of June, 2025. You want to mix it up again?
Sure, we'll get on this.
Now I'm confused.
Let's move one step this way, guys. Thank you. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Somebody be able to tell those photographs apart. Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak with the City Council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. The city clerk has informed me that we have received one email that has been attached to tonight's packet. And city clerk, would you please call the first speaker? The first speaker is Alan Farb. Welcome.
Auschwitz concentration camp, 1943. Forced out of the one-person bunk they shared with a third Jewish inmate who had just died, the starving, emaciated Max and Izzy, one hobbling because a German prison guard had broken Max's leg and four of his ribs with a club. The other Izzy, whose teeth had all been knocked out and his hands completely broken by other guards, moved steadily toward the gas chamber. As a camp guard walked by and with the last bit of saliva he could muster, Max spit on the guard and said, "Go to hell, you Nazi swine." As the guard raised the butt of his rifle, Izzy put a broken hand on Max's shoulder and whispered, "Max, we're going to the gas chamber. Don't make trouble." It's very dark humor, but that's Jewish humor because Jews, and I'm sure every margin of the line is persecuted people, have an ironic but poignant way of looking at tragedies and traumas thrust against them. They say if we couldn't laugh, we'd have to cry. I cry for peaceful, mostly older protesters in Boulder, who week after week, for months on end, quietly walked along the Pearl Street Mall seeking the release of the remaining Israeli hostages, whether alive or dead, and who nine days ago were set on fire by someone who violently disagreed with them, someone who hated them because they were Jews. Whatever your feelings of the brutalities and mass destruction happening to everyday people in Gaza because of the Hamas-Israeli war, the anti-Semitic attack in Boulder culminated, as it too often does, an attack on Jews for just being Jews. At this council study session last Monday, just a day after the firebomb attack, three of you mentioned the attack. Counselors Haat, Carmelia, and Mayor Protem Nermela. The Westminster Jewish community and the broader Jewish community would appreciate your acknowledgement or do appreciate your acknowledgements of that attack against quiet, peaceful protesters. I think that besides those three counselors' conscience and community-driven public comments, all Westminster residents would be uplifted if the city, even after lagging nine days after the attack, would issue a very public statement regarding the horrendous firebombing of those peaceful people. By saying it publicly, you would let all of us know the city has all residences' support, no matter one's background. Because you see, as Holocaust survivor and Nobel Prize winner Elie Wiesel said, "The opposite of hate is not love. The opposite of hate is indifference." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Bland.
Sorry, I got paperwork to pay, research. So we're gonna send it off in simple ways. This one's a heartbreaking letter, written by somebody. Oh, I need one.
Oh, sorry.
One's for me. Send that one. Send that one. I think I got enough for Joey, actually. I'll give you guys a second to kind of... Everybody got some? Yeah. Okay, go ahead, start that clock. Hey, guys. Anyways, I live over there, actually in the vicinity of this Zurger. I've done quite a bit of research. I've been following Jefferson County school districts for quite some time. I just want to point out, they've had a bunch of salts here. Just trying to indicate this public meeting that we just experienced with Cardell just recently. We'll get to that at a different meeting. But I want to go back to this one here, 531. This was a couple of years ago. There's no indications of public comments. I did meet with some people that were there. They said there was about 60 people. So the opposition even then was, you know, not to sell the school. I just want to make that an actual fact. So now what I want you to do is take a look at... Let's look at Glennon. So anyways, that one actually... What they put in there was Jacob Academy. That's a childcare center, okay? This was an opposition that went up for sale. I commend them. Somehow, this turned out very well for them. They sold it for $3 million. Let's go to the Thompson. Here's another one. This one sold at $2,850,000. That's quite a bit of money, actually. But if you look at these dates, we got July 12th, July 6th, July 10th. These all indicate that this CRL associates, they did a nice representation. They listened to people. I highlighted a lot of document on each one of these. And some of the biggest concerns were that these people had their schools going up for sale, and they were opposed to single-family homes also. That's where I'm going with this Zurger thing. I live real close, watch my kids go to that school. What I want to do is just indicate that the other one, that actually it's in Lakewood. What's funny is the city of Lakewood is gonna let them develop some homes. They limited what the homes are gonna be in there. They're buying two acres. The city stepped up. They had a one-acre parcel already. So Lakewood is actually buying two acres from that school to make it a three-acre park. I want to make sure that you understand the remaining sale price is $2,317,500. So I see Jefferson County's getting quite a bit of money, and I project that there's gonna be some other obvious properties coming up in the future. And I just follow. I just think that we could do a little bit better rather than build homes. That's just my opinion. But they have these options to sell the daycares. I actually heard... Oh, I only got a couple more minutes. Oh, read this last letter. This is a letter from a lady in Zurger. It's heartbreaking. This is the most important document you need to read. Thank you. I gotta go.
Thank you.
You guys are welcome. Great job, Nancy.
The next speaker is Chris Klein. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I am Chris Klein. I volunteer with Animal Rescue the Rockies and actually help citizens trap and neuter returned community cats here in the North suburbs. I'd like to thank the staff and the City Council for passing and taking the ordinance up and passing Counselors Bill Number 19 on the first reading last week. I'd like to ask the council to pass this ordinance, but please ensure the ordinance does not require citizens to neglect community cats when they provide ongoing care. As I mentioned before, I've helped several citizens TNR community cats here in Westminster over the last few years. And several of them have told me that they were... Animal Management told them to stop feeding the cats and/or they would be issued a ticket. This is the only city that I'm aware of that does this. At the first reading, Animal Management mentioned they rarely issue tickets to anyone feeding community cats. However, I spoke with Officer Jellin, the management supervisor, earlier last week, and she said they rarely issue tickets for feeding the cats. However, they do issue warning tickets for feeding community cats. The reasoning is they consider them feral, like feeding wildlife, which is not allowed. Community cats are not wildlife. They should not be treated as such. I know many of you researched this topic and found that it is best to allow TNR and allow ongoing care for the community cat populations for numerous reasons. The TNR process is easier to perform when the cats are contained in one particular area. The cats are... They live in a healthier state by having a caregiver or custodian providing care for them. The nuisance behaviors are greatly diminished in other areas of the community. Harm to wildlife and bird populations are significantly decreased when they have a caregiver providing a food source, and the risk of having a vacuum of unfixed cats returning back or breeding back to the location are greatly lower with a caregiver. Lastly, how can you expect a citizen when they spend so much time doing the responsible thing of trapping cats, taking them in to get fixed and vaccinated, and paying for them often on their own, and returning them back, which is a public service, only to expect them to neglect those cats afterwards? It's just not feasible. It's not humane. It's cruel. The majority of people would not spend the time TNR-ing these cats, even if... For community cats, even though they engage in the TNR process, that is just wrong. At the first reading, Animal Management mentioned the first thing they do is educate citizens. Animal Management mentioned they do not... They educate citizens, but they did not mention how they educate the citizens. So I asked council to ensure Animal Management officers and educate citizens on the importance of spay neuter for feral cats and encourage TNR rather than requiring them to neglect them. Issuing warning or regular tickets for feeding them and requiring citizens to neglect community cats does nothing to stop the breeding cycle of community cats, and it is very cruel. Thank you for your time considering this topic. I ask you to pass this, but ensure that caregivers and custodians are accepted in the TNR process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Westminster. Hello, council. I'm Tom Lambo. As always, it's good to be in front of you. I'm here to lift up Westminster in prayer, so please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, you are the God of Westminster, and we humbly come before you and ask that you make Westminster a beacon of your light. You are holy, the Lord God Almighty. No one is before you, and you answer to no one. No one is greater than you. Grace and mercy is the foundation of your love for us. Without these, we would perish and have no hope. You are truth. You possess all the truth, and you will reveal it all. In Proverbs 1921, you state, "Many plans are in man's heart, but the Lord's decree will prevail." You stop the wicked plans of our enemy before their full intentions are carried out. You're the Lord of lords and king of kings. Time is moving fast. The landscape in which we live in is constantly changing. It can be exhausting just trying to keep up with the events that surround us, and somehow, we need to maintain our own lives. In Isaiah 40:29-31, we receive more of your wisdom when it states, "He gives power to the faint, and to him who has no might, he increases strength. Even the youths shall faint and be weary, and young men shall fall exhausted. But they who wait for the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings like eagles. They shall run and not be weary. They shall walk and not faint." Help us to seek you in everything we do. Give us the strength and endurance to actively pursue you and not to forget to include you in all our plans, even the most mundane routine in our lives. You know us all, and you know us better than we know ourselves. Your love for us is immense. Father, we are blessed to have many individuals who take care of Westminster each day. Their daily work enhances our life experience and makes life more enjoyable for us. So we lift up to you all those that daily work in Westminster. They are perfectly living out 1 Peter 4:10 when it states, "Each of you should use whatever gift you have received to serve others as faithful stewards of God's grace in its various forms." So as these workers bless us, we ask that you bless them and their families. Watch over them and keep them from the wicked deeds of our enemy. Thank you for these faithful stewards. You are our God, and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Colapiti.
Hello. In the other room, we were listening to the plans for another ballot initiative for firehouses and, I guess, roadwork for this fall's election. That ballot measure lost last year, but at least it was put on the ballot. What we have is a municipal court building that's going ahead with construction that should have been on the ballot to begin with. And it wasn't. And it wasn't. And I've asked in the past to understand what happened with our IRA funding, the Inflation Reduction Act funding, and I have never heard back because in my mind, some of those monies that may not be available now could have been available to retrofit the existing municipal court building, improve it, and upgraded in such a way as to become handicap accessible, energy-saving, and not require the building of a whole new structure at $43 million. I can't believe that we're allowing $43 million to be spent on a municipal court building that didn't get voter approval, which it was supposed to, and that doesn't meet any energy savings. 2050 is the year we're supposed to have net zero carbon emissions buildings. And from what I understand, there's nothing like that incorporated within the new municipal court building, and I think it's a crime.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Venimore. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, jody, community. I just want to say what a blessing we have being able to live, work, and shop in Westminster. Anybody just, or if you guys take and drive around and just look at the community, it's a true blessing. You know, we've got a lot of beauty here. We've got a lot of nice amenities for us to have. We've got nice shopping facilities, places to live, so. Good for Westminster. Hope that we reschedule the block party that was canceled Friday night for recognizing the fire department, the block party down on 73rd. I'd like to give support to the red light and speed cameras program coming up. I think that that would help with a lot of things in the city to where you can't get these people's attention, to slow them down or get them to stop running lives. So if we get them in the pocketbook for 80 bucks or 100 bucks, we get their attention. So hopefully we follow through with that. Also, I hope you guys go ahead and sign the intergovernmental agreement with Highland Hills. I think that's an excellent program for the district and for the city of Westminster. So I stand and give you guys support on that one. I'm also looking forward to the Schoenberg Farm Project coming up. I was actually in the milk barns when I was about that big. I was probably about three years old. And we came from farms down in Oklahoma, and so that Schoenberg Farm is near and dear to me. We had milk products and eggs and stuff delivered to us in our milk box out on the porch as a kid. Also, I'd like to see the Zurger School repurposed. I think it's an extreme loss of capital and a waste of money to tear that building down. And, you know, it's a community asset, so I would hate to see that go away. So I'm not against that, or I'm against that being sold to a developer. And then also, last but not least, I'd just like to thank Tom for coming up here and having the good news to pray for the city and stand with us. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you.
That was our final speaker. Thanks. The city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a report this evening. First, I'd like to thank all of the members of our community who spoke tonight. We listened and we will follow up. And if we missed something from an earlier public comment period, do apologize. We'll get that information back to you. Next slide, please. By way of update, this week, there is a big event happening at 3030 Turnpike Drive, which is our new municipal courthouse groundbreaking ceremony. So Westminster City Council would like to welcome the community to be part of this historic event. All ages are welcome and there will even be activities for children. And I want to announce that that groundbreaking begins at 5:00 PM this Wednesday, June 11th. So please plan on attending. That's an historic moment for the city of Westminster. Next slide, please. Also, by way of update, the Police Department Annual Report has now been released. And I would like to talk about it briefly. It does highlight the department's community engagement successes over the past year. The Westminster Police Department received over 78,000 calls for service and issued 7,700 citations in the past year. Our victims' advocates and corresponders made more than 9,000 community contacts. Those are individual contacts with members of our community in distress and our advocates and corresponders work tirelessly to help those individuals. The average response time for our police department in responding to those calls has been reduced by over a minute, and that's bringing the response time for our community down to seven minutes and 18 seconds, which is right up there in industry best practices. The department has also secured over $750,000 in grant funding, so this is not hitting the Westminster taxpayer. They're bringing in grant funding to support the department and their community engagement efforts. If anybody in the community would like a copy of this report or view it online, go ahead and go directly to westminsterco.gov/polic. Next slide, please. Also happening this week is the city's annual Top Taco Event. That's on Thursday. That starts at City Park at 6:00 PM. There will be more than 60 restaurants present, and they present their unique gourmet taco creations. The traditional, from traditional classics through to innovative fusion masterpieces. There will be unlimited samples to celebrate a decade of taco excellence and culinary innovation. So for more information and tickets, if you're interested, visit denver toppingaco.com. And apparently you can wear the tacos as well. Next slide, please. I also want to announce this, this is a very unique opportunity for our community to be directly engaged in helping to shape the future of the city. And this one is regarding public art. Community input is welcome on a public art proposal for downtown Westminster. And that, in fact, the community is invited in to look at the top proposals from artists and will actually help select the final art piece to be installed in downtown Westminster. If you're interested in helping pick Westminster's newest piece of public art, please drop by Cocapelli's at 8931 North Harland Street. So that's right immediately adjacent to downtown. That's on Tuesday, June 10th, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. You get a chance, a preview of the finalists for that public artwork, and you can weigh in and help the city select the final piece of art to be built by the artist and installed in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, we have heard and received the three proclamations, and I want to thank our friends from the inclusivity board for being here tonight to receive all three. Those two individuals represent the city and our community very strongly in a lot of areas, and I think tonight highlights three of those areas that are very important to Westminster. I have two information-only items on the report and in the packet. A first one was referenced by one of our speakers, and that is the Police Department Red Light and Speed Camera Update. Our police chief and his team are looking at options for both of those in Westminster with more to come, but he provided an update as to the research so far, and that is really good information in that very brief overview memo from Chief Harbert. So if you're interested, please have a look at that. And also tonight, an information-only report on Westminster Boulevard Fence Replacement Project, and that is that fence that runs along Westminster Boulevard from 92nd Avenue to 95th Avenue, and the city is taking steps with that community to replace that fence, much of which has been damaged over the years through motor vehicle accidents and collisions. And so the city is going to be helping the residents get that fence back in shape. On consent agenda, there are 10 items this evening. One item has been removed from consent agenda and will be voted on separately, and that is the item J, the last item on consent. For public hearings, there is one public hearing this evening, and that is a public hearing in consideration of an official development plan for Uplands Filing 4, Block 1, P A D 1. So that is a public hearing that will be heard later this evening. This week, on Tuesday, I mentioned the Downtown Signature Artwork Open House. That is, again, Cocapelli's at 5:30 PM, runs through till 8:30 PM. We also have a planning commission meeting on Tuesday this week. That's regarding the Unified Development Code, and it's a workshop, and that is running from 6:30 to 8:30 right here at Westminster City Hall. Cancelled this week is the regular meeting of the city's planning commission, so no planning commission meeting this week. On Wednesday this week, June 11th, I mentioned the Municipal Courthouse Groundbreaking. That's at our courthouse, existing courthouse facility from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And there is an inclusivity board meeting, and that is at 6:00. And that's a hybrid meeting. You can participate remotely for that one if you'd like. Next slide, please. Also, this week on Thursday, mentioned the Top Taco Westminster City Park. That starts at 7:00 for general admission. On Saturday, June 14th, I really want to highlight this one. This is a very popular event for our community. This is the Free Tree Limb Recycling Event at the Brow property. That's at 10001 Alkire Street, and you can come by anytime between 8:00 AM in the morning to noon and bring your tree limbs and tree branches and such in the city. We'll take care of those, grind them up, turn them into something that you can use and pick up for free a little bit after the event. So we'll have more information on that. But if you have tree limbs and other such debris, you can bring that by for free recycling. Also on Saturday, the Westminster History Tour, and that's a fishing and founding fathers event. And that's at our Westminster History Center, and that starts at 9:00 in the morning and runs till noon, and that's at 7,200 Lowell Boulevard. Next slide, please. At our next meeting of City Council, it will be a study session. That's right here in the room next door on Monday, June 16th. It will begin at 6:30 PM. For information only, will be the follow-up report from the city manager on the 2025 Strategic Plan. So this will incorporate all of the edits that City Council directed and agreed to at the last meeting on this topic, which was very recently. So this will put the final document into public record and it will be available online as well. For presentations, there will be four that night, special improvement districts within metropolitan special districts, and that's a presentation by our outside legal firm, Butler Snow. Next up will be the Bark Restaurant Progress and Update. So that's the building located at 3915 West 73rd, and that's where staff will bring in an update on the project to date and next steps. Also, that evening will be wildfire events and preparedness led by our fire chief, Eric Burke, and that will be important and very timely, especially with what's happening to our neighbors in the north, which is coming down here now. And then finally, a Fire and Streets Infrastructure Ballot Measure Follow-Up from this evening. So we will come back in based on City Council's direction in pre-meeting earlier this evening with the follow-up material as committed. And finally, there will be Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Session Meeting, and that will be direction from the WIDA Board on Proposed Development, on a Proposed Development Agreement, and the possible sale of WIDA-owned property on Block C5 in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. As always, you can reach out directly to the city, and I'm going to give another plug for Westminster's new updated Access Westminster. If you have not got this app, please go on your App Store and go ahead and get it for free, and this will allow you to contact the city on anything that you see out in our community that needs to be addressed by City Hall. You can also phone the city directly at 303-658-2400 or reach us on our website at westminsterco.gov. That is also recently overhauled, and if you find bugs or tweaks, please let us know about those, and we will continue to improve that for you and make sure that's effective. And then finally, we do have four social media accounts, Facebook, Instagram, X, and Nextdoor. That's all that happened here.
Any questions of city manager? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, manager, anders for your report. There was some comment, and you had brought up in your report about the new court. So I think that it would be helpful for folks to know where they could learn more about it if they aren't able to go to the groundbreaking. I know as one of the members that was on council who got to tour the current facility, there were good reasons why it couldn't be retrofitted, so it would be good for the public to understand those different things, as well as the fact that we are able to do financing that is legally allowed, that did not raise the taxes of the taxpayer. So whatever context tonight you can give or where you could point people to get more information about that where they can know. I know obviously that's a secured facility, so some things aren't necessarily for the public, but whatever we could provide would be, I think, a benefit.
Thank you, councillor. Before the close of the evening, I will get some information out to the folks here as to where to get that information. I would also encourage folks to come to the groundbreaking because there will be a run-through of the background of the project, the history of the existing building, its evolution through multiple purposes over multiple decades, and how it's gotten to the point where we now need a new courthouse. And all that will be covered in the groundbreaking, and I will, before the end of this evening, get back to you with the best way to get some access to material online.
Yeah, I would just echo what you just said because part of that is it was already multiple times retrofitted from different uses into a courthouse. So it's a good history lesson if folks have the opportunity to go check it out.
Any other questions of the city manager? Thank you. That brings us to city council reports, and I'm going to start tonight. I wanted to share with Mr. Farb that I heard last week when we went around the table, there wasn't a councillor sitting there that didn't have heartfelt sadness with what happened in Boulder. I happened to be at a six-hour workshop today in Boulder with 14 mayors and a huge group of people from all different kinds of businesses and places that help with antisemitism. And I heard some very sad stories. I heard from elected officials I have worked with that never shared their story, and they're heartbreaking of how they get treated and what happens when swastikas are placed on their homes and other things happening to them. I heard from a gentleman that was at the June 1st meeting and tried to help one of the women that was encased in total fire and had to watch her skin melt. And as they were trying to pick her up to get her to a safer place to try to get the fire out, she just became slippery and they could not help her. Anyway, we had, I didn't get home until almost 4:30 ready to come here, but in the midst of lunch, one of the mayors already, they had a resolution ready to go. They shared it with the other 13 of us, and I shared it immediately, sitting from that workshop with everybody. They have not had an entire time to look at it, but they know what it's about. And so we have directed city manager in our pre-meeting to take that resolution, make it Westminster's resolution because in other cities, things are in there. We want it from us, and it will go to the city of Boulder and to our two synagogues here so that our Jewish community knows that we support them. I know the night or the day when this all happened, I know I reached out immediately to Rabbi Benji down the street from me because I knew they were having the Shavat party. And he told me they were going to go ahead with it. And ahead of me was a phone call that the police chief had made to both synagogues, and we had police presence so that people were safe. So your council does support. Your council has been busy, and your council has done quick and swift action around that whole incident, and it's deplorable what happened, and we all agree with that. I also, last week, had a Metro Mayor's Caucus. We talked about, of course, local control and the issues around that that are in the news and with housing and what different communities are doing. We had our Jeffco Quarterly Meeting. City Manager Andrews and I were there in person. We couldn't see the screen, so I don't know if any others were hybrid and on the Zoom. There, we talked about nothing but the unhoused population, and they put up the tents that Jeffco has with their emergency management group that if a community needs those. And so we got to look at those. We had the MAC opening, and I don't know if I saw Eric here. You know, the pickleball courts are alive and well. I had never seen a pickleball. I watched so I knew how it was. Counselor Carmelia actually played. And the thing I want to tell you is the spirit of your entire team there, they were so excited. You could see morale, you could see buy-in, you could see laughter and fun and people that loved their. that love their jobs. And I just want to tell you, because I know you go down there, that to all of them, that it shined off of each one of them. And thank you for all that you and your team, entire team, do for the city of Westminster. Because no matter where you go, you see that. But we saw that that night. They were so excited to have the scavenger hunting and all of the things that were involved. So thanks for that. Anyone else? Counselor Carmelia?
I'll start with Shucks. I think you covered it, Mayor. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Farb, for speaking in light of the incident that happened on June 1st. But to the mayor's point, she covered everything that I was going to mention here, and we are definitely going to, I think, agree on a resolution here very shortly. So thank you for your presence. I think that it takes a lot of courage to stand here on a topic that touches, I'm sure, so close to home. And that takes courage, and I think that we all need to be courageous in times like these and protect not just ourselves, but our neighbors and our friends and our families. And it's really important to make a phone call to anyone you think might be impacted, but even folks you don't know might be impacted, because that's what a community does. You don't know where those gaps are, and so if we reach out to everyone we care for, it helps just that extra little bit. Let's see, I just want to, this was on your report, City Manager Andrews, but I just want to say thank you for the update for next week on the Bark. Every time I start to wonder about something, I feel like you follow up in a very timely manner. All of a sudden, there's an update. So thank you so much. And you do that often with many other things, so I just want to call that out and say thank you. And I wanted to hone in on the art piece as well. These aren't questions, so I'm just adding it to my comments. I wanted to say that as a community, I'm really excited that we are finally honing in, well, we have been, but we're really honing in and uplifting the significance of the arts in our community. And I just believe that this is really important in a number of ways for our cultural identity, and it gives us, you know, pride in our city, and it helps us, make us feel at home in the city. So I'm really excited about the new art installation. So definitely come join us at Cocapelli to give your opinion on that, because when we have your buy-in, it helps make it feel, you know, more at home. And I think that neighborly community is what we're all looking for right now. And as a transit champion, I would not be doing my duty if I didn't remind everyone that it is Bike to Work Day on June 25th. So please bike to work. I want to mention, I attended, as the mayor said, the MAC open house, and that was so much fun, and I can't wait to go back. And eventually, I will get good at pickleball, and I will beat some of you. So count on that. And to our resident Mr. Klein on the Community CAT ordinance, I think that we've been, we've made a lot of progress this year, and I thank you for being so diligent in educating us. I think that, you know, I'm going to go ahead and pass this, and I think that we can look to the future to maybe add on to it and build it and make it better than what it is if it doesn't cover everything it needs to. But just thank you for your continued care and compassion, because all, in my mind, our community includes all wildlife and all the creatures in the city. So we'll do our best, and so we can continue to build on what we're passing this evening.
Anyone else? Counselor Ireland?
I also want to acknowledge Alan Farb this evening. I'm sorry I didn't say something last week, but I've been emotional about it. So I've had many Jewish friends throughout my life, and I love them all dearly, so I stand with your people, and I am sorry for the pain that hate has caused over history and not just in Boulder. So I just want you to know that I stand with your people, and I acknowledge that the pain that you're experiencing. I'm sorry. Thank you all for coming out and speaking. And I did go to the historical M Board meeting, and I did send an email about people who'd be concerned about the overruns there. And also, in the public comment, it did pass the doors and windows, but they were concerned about the historical significance, because there is large garage doors on one side, and they didn't feel like that was totally historical, and they're afraid. Seeing since it's a brewery restaurant, and the history of breweries and restaurants is not good, like, the failure rate within five years of restaurants is very high. So they're concerned about the turnover if it has to go to somebody else, and it's already been built that way. So just to let you know of some of the concerns that I heard. I also went to the Top Golf Tournament for Adams County. I was called out early because I have a new grandson, and there's three other children in the family, so they need my help dearly. So I didn't get to attend as long as I wanted to, but the turnout was amazing, so just to let you know. And I'm sure they raised a lot of money, so that was good to see. Anyway, thank you.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to also thank Mr. Farb for his public comment today. It's been a heartbreaking nine days or so since it happened. I've been busy speaking with constituents, Jewish community, all forms of life, on what's been happening and how they're feeling and why I can do the help. I'm looking forward to our statement that we agreed on today. And more importantly, if anyone's listening who's looking at Westminster, and, you know, we're seeing a lot of hate in Colorado, it's coming in. And I just want to say that if you feel afraid, if you feel anxiety, if you feel anxious, we are with you. This council is with you. Hate will not be tolerated in this city in any form against any people. The acts that occurred in Boulder were antisemitic. That would not be tolerated in this city. You can feel safe here. So if you don't feel safe, please let us know. You can reach out to me anytime, and I will help you. So thank you, Mr. Farb, for your comments.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, so I think one of the things that's great about this city, if you look at the proclamations that we did tonight, is this is a city that believes in inclusion. There are a lot of different things that we don't agree with each other on, but one thing I think that the city stands strong on is that everybody has a place to be safe and heard and have a place here in the city of Westminster. And we see that with the work of our inclusivity board. This specific instance, I think a lot of you, if you've been around any time since I've been on council, a long time, I'm kind of a mutt, from Native American to Italian-American to Irish-American. But I also, my great-grandmother on my mom's side, her name is Minnie Ewing, so she was a German Jew who came here during bad times in the world. So certainly something that cannot be tolerated. And as far as this city is concerned, we should be very proud about the city that we live in, because I think that we go out of our way to assure, from our police department to the inclusivity board, the work that we do to assure that this is a safe place for all people.
See no one else? That brings us to our consent agenda, and we have been asked to take off Item J, so do I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through I. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8I.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8I. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 8J. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to authorize procurement actions with CDM Smith, Inc., McCarthy Building Companies, Inc., Global Construction Estimating Corporation, and PCL Construction related to Westminster Boulevard Drinking Water Facility.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 8J. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I will not be voting for this. I've been against the water treatment plant from the very beginning, the cost, the undersize of it for the cost, the wildlife on the property that is there is amazing, and we're just going to destroy it. So the whole thing is a no for me, so I will not be voting for this.
Roll call, please. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes. The motion passes on a 5-1 vote.
That brings us to public hearings. We have a public hearing in consideration of an official development plan for Uplands filing for Block 1 PA-D1. Counselor, somebody, do we have staff? I will open the public hearing and have staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name's Jacob Kaza. I'm the principal planner for current development, and I'm filling in for John McConnell tonight. I'm here to provide you with the staff presentation for this public hearing item. A staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published on the Westminster window, the mail notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 2,293 property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Seven public hearing, seven public notification signs were posted on the subject property. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. The project site is located southeast of the intersection of Federal Boulevard and West 84th Avenue, outlined in red. This site plan is from Sheet 19 of the Official Development Plan. The plan includes both single-family detached and attached units. With this application, the applicant is requesting an exception from the PDP to allow single-family detached front-loaded homes, which would be utilized along the south property line. The publicly accessible private park is located along the southern property line and includes a detention pond. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Staff recommends that City Council hold a public hearing and approve the ODP. Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval, 7 to 0. Staff finds that approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priorities, access to opportunity and economic vitality, which are met by facilitating new development and providing new publicly accessible park space. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention, and there are several staff members with us this evening, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council members. Thanks very much for this opportunity to address you this evening on behalf of the ODP for Area D1. As always, I'll give a brief Uplands overview tonight, as I know our planning team probably has more slides to cover this evening to walk through the site. Just kind of around the overall site, all of Parcel A, except for the Town Center, Village Center parcels, are now approved, as you see the underlying site plans noting on B1 today. I just drove through there. There are eight units under construction. You are seeing homes emerge there. We walked the property the other day with adjacent property owners. There is so much excitement and anticipation for that. Also, on the C Parcel, 88th, is nearly completed. I just drove that. You can park now in that trailhead that overlooks and looks off to the east of Water World and the parkland there. It is absolutely stunning, the view that you now have off to the east. So you're seeing a lot of the infrastructure come together, and now, no great surprise that you see D1 and B2. Tonight is D1. These are probably two of the more challenging neighborhoods because of the site and the topography of those sites. We'll focus a lot tonight, or primarily, on D1. The infrastructure that you are seeing all around the site, you are seeing roadways emerge, you are understanding 86th, 87th, Irving from the north to south, but now also really starting to see the infrastructure improvements along Federal as well. Tonight, we'll be talking again about that southeast corner of 84th and Federal, looking at that very important view corridor that was always protected in the comp plan, the different eight-foot sidewalks there that frame that site, and actually, as you'll see, create a really meandering trail there, so people can absorb that grade and also protect that view corridor. So we'll go in great detail. And again, an extension of the bike lane all along 84th. This is the site, a very interesting site, that has Greenbrier to the south, which is now an affordable housing neighborhood, Panorama Point, and Cobblestone Park. We think of this so many ways, the extension, really, of Cobblestone Park and how important that is to make those connections. When we had the opportunity to present in concept review, just a reminder, we actually had a very thorough discussion about this site, particularly focused on that cobblestone and PLD, and the importance of the publicly accessible private park, how that needed to act and feel like that. Really, we appreciated there was a lot of focus on the three different home types that we're having on this site, and really, the connections on the parking and 84th Street. How do we still address 84th in doing that? So we're showing you a preview of the exceptions. I will be honest, we feel like exceptions on this site are a badge of honor. It means we have worked our tail off to make this neighborhood work and really build into that grade. I'll just skip down to the compliance kind of overview or snapshot here. We are at the maximum units, 94 units that was prescribed, but look at the different product that we are bringing. To bring 38 detached and the mix of 56 attached, and then most importantly, we were required to bring 4 point percent on the publicly accessible private parks, we are bringing 21.9. It will feel like one large park that goes all the way down into cobblestone, and we think that's the right thing for the community as well. Kaylee has a number of slides. We'll go quickly here, but she's going to walk us through the conceptual neighborhood plan, and we'll come back for questions.
Welcome.
Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. Thank you so much for your time tonight. We are pleased to bring forth the Uplands D1 neighborhood, which will add to the rich housing stock in this area by providing for sale, single-family detached and single-family attached townhomes. This neighborhood was designed from the outside in, and it began with the roughly 3.06 acre view corridor shown on the east side of Federal Boulevard. That was agreed upon at the time of the PDP to preserve the views to downtown, along with the 4.27 acres of PLD that improves the access to the existing Cobblestone Park. The homes are strategically placed on the balance of the site to accommodate the existing significant topography. Today, the site falls approximately 50 feet from West 84th Avenue to the south property line. The proposed detention pond is located at the low point of the developable portion of this neighborhood. The site is accessed in two locations. The main access point is along West 84th Avenue at West 83rd Drive, which it utilizes a standard local street section and traverses west, terminating in a cul-de-sac. A second point of access is provided via an alley connecting West 83rd Drive to the existing Bryant Street to the east. And we are providing three different home types within this neighborhood for the total of 94 homes. The homes along West 84th Avenue in the dark brown are tuck-under townhomes. Those are two-story front elevations facing West 84th Avenue and three stories along the alley. In the darker yellow, those represent our three-story, single-family detached homes. And in the lightest cream color represents our two-story, single-family detached, front-loaded homes, which are strategically located to accommodate the existing grades through a walkout design. The red stars shown on the brown and yellow homes denote where the roof decks are provided, celebrating those stellar views to the south. And the blue stars represent our publicly accessible private parks. Directly adjacent to the center blue star along West 83rd Drive, we are proposing a dog park just to the south of Alley 2. Here you can see how our proposed site plan and home types accommodate the existing grade on the site. On the left-hand side of the screen is the key map showing where the two cross-sections are cut. The Section A on the west side of the site is shown at the top of the screen, while the B section on the east side of the site is shown at the bottom of the screen. As mentioned, this neighborhood slopes towards the PLD. As shown in the upper section on the north edge of the site, we are proposing two-story townhomes along West 84th that utilize that tuck-under configuration to accommodate the existing grade, while the alley-loaded layout activates the street frontage along West 84th. These homes step down and share an alley with the three-story alley-loaded, single-family detached homes. As you can see, the roof lines of the three-story product are nearly in line with the two-story tuck-under townhomes. These three-story homes front West 83rd Drive that is shared with the two-story, single- These three-story homes front West 83rd Drive that is shared with the two-story, single-family walkout condition that picks up more grade and provides those walkout basements. The second cross-section shows the condition on the east side of the site. This, again, shows how the two-story tuck-under townhomes accommodate the existing grade and share an alley with the three-story, single-family detached homes on the south edge of the site. On the left-hand side of the image here, in the lighter green hatch, represents the dedicated view corridor along Lowell, or sorry, pardon me, along Federal Boulevard. And in the solid green denotes the public land dedication. Additionally, the darker green crosshatch within the D1 parcel is our publicly accessible private park, which wraps around the south side of the site, further enhancing the transition of the surrounding context. Here you can see how the proposed trail will meander through the view corridor and showcase the unobstructed view toward downtown. This illustration highlights the proposed neighborhood showcasing the strong connections from Federal through the scenic view corridor to the west. We worked closely with city staff on off-site connections shown in the dark blue to create improved connectivity as a whole. Additionally, looped pathways provide connectivity throughout the entire neighborhood. The centrally located publicly accessible private park provides overlooks and terraces with expansive views towards downtown. The park showcases an inviting multi-use deck designed to support the wide range of neighborhood activities, such as yoga and small gatherings. This publicly accessible private park continues to the south and offers a peaceful overlook with stunning uninterrupted views of downtown Denver and the Front Range and beyond, creating strong visual connection between the neighborhood and existing cobblestone park. A variety of floor plans and the new architectural styles are provided specific to this neighborhood. All homes within this neighborhood will provide a two-car garage, and the first, we have the two-story, single-family detached homes, which include those walkout basements ranging from 2,987 to 3,675 square feet. Next, we have our three-story, single-family detached homes, ranging from 2,149 to 2,488 square feet. Each home is alley-loaded with a rooftop deck tinging advantage of those views to the south. And finally, we have the two-story, tuck-under townhomes ranging from 1,855 to 1,980 square feet. These homes front along the West 84th Avenue and feature the rooftop decks as well. Next, we'll wrap up the presentation by walking through a few exceptions. All exceptions are supported by the intent of the PUD Zone District, which encourages innovative development with the intention of providing diversification and flexibility in housing types, prices, and overall design. These exceptions collectively allow us to provide additional housing diversity within the city that is pedestrian-friendly, uses water thoughtfully, and meets the overall intent of the PDP. The majority of the exceptions are consistent with what was presented at the concept review meeting with you all. As mentioned earlier, we are able to remove our exception requests on the entry median. We are adding one exception to allow for an attached walk along Bryant Street. Our first exception is for parking. The exception addresses how parking is provided, which is consistent with the previously approved Uplands neighborhoods, and is supported by the approved vision within the PDP and various city documents. We meet and exceed city's code in total, but just in a different way. A total of 283 spaces are required and 296 spaces are provided. The orange on the screen denotes our two-car minimum garage spaces across all home types. The yellow boxes on the south bank of homes denote our two driveway spaces per home, and the blue spaces are our head and surface parking spaces. And lastly, in purple, are internal on-street parallel parking spaces, which also help with traffic calming. Our next set of exceptions relate to the site layout, the majority of which are consistent with the previously approved Uplands neighborhoods. First, highlighted in orange along West 84th Avenue, Bryant Street, and then two locations along the south edge. In light of the substantial amount of the protected land within this neighborhood, we are requesting a reduction in the overall perimeter setback. In dark blue, also along West 84th Avenue, we are requesting the removal of berms to create a more pedestrian-friendly and activated streetscape. In place of the berms, a variety of landscape improvements are provided to create separation while accommodating the existing utility easement. In pink, we are requesting attached sidewalks along Bryant Street on the west side to match the existing condition on the east side. In light blue, the three front-loaded homes on the southwest side of the neighborhood have been uniquely designed for these wider lots, with each elevation offering a distinct style. Along the southern row of homes, we are proposing three different elevation styles with the same floor plan. In gray, highlighted in the center row of the three-story, single-family detached homes, we are requesting an additional five feet of building height to allow for those rooftop decks, allowing these homes to span those great views towards Denver. In brown, along the southern row of homes are our front-loaded homes adding to the rich housing mix within this neighborhood, providing walkouts that work harmoniously with the existing steep topography of the site. And lastly, all homes include a reduction of the minor roof pitches using plane breaks, bearing masting, and diverse building materials in place of box-window requirement, and allowing for the columns to be of materials that are reflective of the architectural style. Additionally, we are providing private outdoor spaces through porches and decks, including raised and covered porches. Similar to the previously approved neighborhoods, we are requesting reduced on-lot setbacks to provide compact homes that facilitate looped fire access, preserve adjacent open spaces, and utilize water thoughtfully. We're happy to walk through these in greater detail, but in summary, on the top left in brown, we are showing the proposed on-lot setbacks for the alley-loaded townhomes that front West 84th. Next, on the right in yellow, we are showing proposed on-lot setbacks for the alley-loaded three-story, single-family homes. And finally, in the cream color in the lower left, we're showing proposed on-lot setbacks for the two-story, single-family detached homes that include a built-to requirement along West 83rd Drive to accommodate the fire requirements, and a reduction in rear setback for decks at the southwest corner of the neighborhood where those homes backed the public land dedication. With that, I'm going to pass this back off to Marcus.
I'll just wrap up and go through these final slides, just noting that water, how conscious we are of that, again, we are 100 acre feet below our projections. This neighborhood actually uses what we've been allocated, the 26 acre feet, but we will continue to do that as we go across the site and other neighborhoods. As Kaylee mentioned, and Jacob on the staff position, that we believe we're in full compliance with the approval criteria and have worked exhaustingly. I would note, we have worked closer with the surrounding neighbors with Panorama Point on detailed discussions about this neighborhood than we have in a long time with neighbors. They really knew that site. They wanted to understand the separation from the condos, the roadways, the cottages, how that worked. We actually had another meeting tonight at 6:45 to go over those last questions. So we have worked very closely and appropriately with that neighborhood, just again, bringing this back, following, of course, the guidance, but there was an opportunity here on the publicly accessible private parks, and we hope that we have done that the right way. We would respectfully request your support, and honestly, staff has been a terrific partner, really trying to come up with the right design and the way we accommodate that. So thank you very much. We look forward to any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Councilor Carmelia?
I have a couple of questions on the berm that was originally designated. Can you just explain the difference between that and the proposed landscaping?
Sure. I'm going to, and, Councilor, I will find the right image here, go back and forth. I think the first thing that I would just note is, one of the challenges on the landscape is actually the utilities that are on the south side of 84th. As you know, we're burying the power lines there, so part of that is also where you can put the landscaping, the traditional tree frontage, but your question's about the berm, so we can add more to that.
Yeah, within the landscape code, berms are required as a transition, and due to the utility easement, we have a seven-foot right-of-way setback and then an eight-foot sidewalk, and behind that is where we're going to be putting the right-of-way trees, so we're still providing them and meeting the requirement, but just in a different way. Typically, you would provide that between the curb and the sidewalk.
Understood. Thank you so much. That makes sense. I just want to make sure there's lots of trees, so that's my concern. And then, related but separate, and I'm probably wrong here, but I think this is one of the first proposals I've seen with a lot of greenway trails through it, which is fantastic, and I realize this is probably not going to happen, but wherever I can, I like to ask or propose, is it possible to switch the asphalt for gravel or something more permeable or more of a walkable trail, even if it was inner-city, or I realize that we're probably trying to promote accessibility and keep it real clean, but just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I would just note on here, and, Councilor, again, just showing some of those pedestrian trails, you can see actually some of the ADA challenges on this site below that deck there, right? You see how hard we had to work there to really allow that. Again, the meandering trail, so we're with you just to the, I guess, east of that area. We're looking at some dirt trails. We actually think the landscape that we're designing here really lends itself to that, exactly how you're saying, and some of those images we showed. We think that's the right connection here, right? Cobblestone has those trails, but it's so interesting today, if you go to Greenbrier, you can't access the park today, right? So, again, trails there or sidewalks there, but then looking for those crusher-fine trails as well. So Kaylee can add, but that is a key part of this.
Thank you. And for the question in regards to the sidewalk and the view corridor and on the public land dedication, we worked closely with city staff and this requested that it be of concrete for probably maintenance purposes, but I don't want to speak on behalf of the city on that.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know it was requested. And then, I just want to talk a little bit about the size of the houses themselves. And it seems like these are much larger houses, and I guess, first of all, do we know what these are going to be going for? Can you give us a scale?
We don't, we really don't have that at all, I think particularly because of where they are. It's interesting, if you think of that neighborhood, how it lays out the smaller, the townhome smaller size, they really speak to the units that are just south of there, right? Those are attached townhomes, so we think it's that. So, Councilor, I'm not avoiding, we have no idea what those are. These are more expensive than we've brought forward today, right? Because they are larger footprints. The challenge is absorbing that grade. So we're actually picking up the side because of that additional story to really absorb into that hill. So that's where you're going to see a higher price point. We've always said this site and B2, those lend itself to those kind of larger lots because of the grade, frankly, absorbing them.
Right, okay. And then, two questions that go from there is, how much, I guess if I was going to be investing in a larger-sized home, I'd want to see some acreage around it. I realize you have some of the houses that are standalone. How much acre, how much lot size do they have outside?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll just give you a quick opinion, then we'll give you the answer on the lot sizes. The lot sizes are much smaller, right, because of this site, but these are remarkable views. And I think frankly, a large lot makes that way to, just to the benefit of that owner, and actually, in the layout of this, we capture those views, those three-story product that we have, they're less height than the two-and-a-half, right, there, as you look at that crosscut. So we thought that was an opportunity that burdens nobody else off-site, right? So our middle row is our tallest homes, and so we're able to do it that way. So again, we actually thought the smaller lot was more publicly benefiting, if you will, particularly the south side of our lots that are really small, and it actually is the public park, right, that publicly accessible private park. Kaylee probably knows the lot sizes, or is looking. If you have another question, she'll give you those exact dimensions of the lot sizes.
The other question has completely left my mind, so I think we're set.
Great, perfect. We will give those lot sizes here in a minute, but they are definitely tighter and smaller, some of those single-family ones at the bottom, because of the layout, unique layout, are a little larger than we've seen in Uplands.
And I do appreciate the creativity with the topography, so that is good, and I'm hoping you won't create something that won't sell, so I know you'll make sure it'll sell, so.
Counselor Ireland?
I was looking at the drainage from the townhouses to the, to the single-family homes. It looks like they drain into the alley. What are you doing about the drainage there?
Sure. I'm going to let our engineer, if that's okay, answer that. I think that's a safer solution there.
This is Eric Pearson with Cage. Can you repeat the question?
Well, I was looking at this townhouses, and it looks like they're set up higher than the single-family homes, and that the drainage from them will go down into the alley where people are driving.
That's correct. So the alley is used as a conveyance right down the middle of the site. Don't know if we have a set plan I could breathe to you, but there's an existing utility corridor right down the middle of the site, and there's existing drainage system, and that's where the alley will convey the, that will work. There you go. So that corridor right down the middle, right where kind of the text is just to the right of the Alley 1, it's existing drainage pipes there, and therefore, the alley is conveying all the drainage to an inlet of where it would capture and collect it and put it into the pipe, and then also any of the overflow paths. So in the emergency condition, we have the view corridor, or the corridor all the way through down to the pond.
Where is the inlet on this map? I have drainage problems where I live. When floods, these detention ponds are a real problem when it floods, so I would like to know where it's going to drain in that alley, because if it's, if water collects in that alley, it's going to be a major problem for that neighborhood. I'm not into alleys anyway, for HOA purposes, are going to have to pay to replace it when it wore out, and then you have water draining down into it, so where does it drain?
So it drains, the alley is inverted?
Yeah, it's inverted, but where? Where is the drainage point?
I don't think you have any utility. 83rd.
83rd.
So down, so there's an inlet in the middle of the alley, and that's where it's going to capture it, and then...
Right in the middle?
In the middle of the alleyway, and then it will capture all the drainage and then convey it down into the drainage.
What keeps it from backing up?
The inlet?
Uh huh.
There's going to be maintenance that has to be put onto that, but there's also redundant...
Yeah, definitely. Redundant maintenance.
So we have, in the drainage report, all inlets are designed with 50% being clogged, so the redundant infrastructure that's being put into it has the ability to absorb some of the clogging.
But not all, right?
Not all, but then if that happens, then you have the emergency overflow being conveyed safely through the, through the development to the south.
With no road through there, it's going to be a problem, because I know where I live, we had to have it put another road in for emergency, because the primary entrance was covered in water in the, in the 500-year flood, so if we hadn't had another entrance, no one could even get to their house. So the drainage in here is an issue for me, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any other questions, or do we have an answer?
I have an answer. Thank you, Councilor Carmelia. So the townhomes range from, the lot sizes range from 1,260 to 2,100, and then the SFD ranges from 2,485 to 5,175. Is that answer what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Do we have public comment? We do. The first speaker is Karen Colaviti. Welcome.
Hello. I know this plan will be approved, just like every other plan has been approved by the Uplands, and every, you know, Marcus wants to call it a badge of honor to have exceptions, but the reality is, exceptions are the name of the game for those guys, because they can't make it work to follow the rules they even set up for themselves in the ODP or PDP or whatever it was. But I want to say that I don't like this plan any better than I've liked any other plans. It's all just packed-in housing, and they say they don't use a lot of water. That's because the site is filled up with asphalt and concrete and rooftops, that's why you don't use water, instead of having impervious or pervious coverage, although there is some, you know, parks and trails and that kind of thing. In the end, what I'm getting at is that every single project, every single filing has required exceptions, and the reality is, in the scheme of development, they have to build... And I'm seeing homes right now that are not selling along 92nd, and I brought this up at the quarterly Uplands meeting, that's not their property, but along 92nd there in the new downtown area are a whole bunch of townhomes that are just sitting there. They're not selling at all. And I don't predict personally that their B1 filing is going to, the ones under construction now are going to sell that quickly either. And, and they didn't even take advantage of views. I mean, I can't believe they had these western views, and then the site plan focuses on the water tower and the apartments. It's like, that's crazy site planning, especially when you're asking for, I don't know, six, seven, 800 for attached homes. I'll be very surprised if those sell. What I'm getting at here is that they're, they're pouring asphalt and, you know, covering a once beautiful site, the Westminster Farm, with all this asphalt and concrete, and I predict actually that it's going to sit like that, like some of the other, you know, properties we have in the city that are full of concrete and asphalt and utility boxes and nothing there. And after three years, if there is no homes built, or there are no homes built, we're going to be stuck with all this asphalt and concrete set up to support their metro districts, but with people not purchasing their homes. I mean, people are looking for affordable housing. This is, none of this is affordable housing, except for the ones they've got subsidized on the east side of Federal. And I, I would just suggest that before they start laying more asphalt and concrete, they, they start seeing how these homes are selling, because I wouldn't predict that another city council would approve those home plans with, site plans with all the exceptions.
Thank you. Your time is up. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Hello again. Just got a couple of concerns here to bring up. Is, on this plan that we've got before us here, this slide number eight, if we take and look at alley number one, as it goes west towards the park, it looks like it turns and then heads south into a cul-de-sac, which turns into a street, and then comes back out to Clay or to the second alley. With the density of the property, if there was a fire in there, I think that we need to give it a little bit more safety here. And if we could take on the end of the alley to the far west end, we've got all that real estate where the park's at, if we could make that a little bit bigger there to where, if we've got to get a fire truck in there for a backup between the alley and the other houses to defend fire from jumping that alley, we can safely get a truck in there and then get them turned around down at the, the far west end. It's just, just safety for, you know, if something happens, because we don't want any, we don't want any fires, but we sure don't want our fire department at risk. So, that's one, one suggestion. And then also, I hope that the city's working with Uplands as far as trying to be more water-wise. I know we're talking about saving a bunch of water and everything, but if there can be mulch material used, plants that doesn't take a lot of water to let them grow rapidly, that would be great for the landscape, so that we're trying to save as much water as possible. And then, also, we're doing all these parks. Is the city planning to give additional money in the park and parks budget? Because as these parks get developed, someone's got to maintain them. And I've seen a lot of the parks that I've brought up here in the past to be, parks are, have been neglected. And so, we need to take care of what we have. So, the city's got to plan on start putting more money into the parks budget to take care of the new stuff, and also, if we're doing more water-wise landscaping with mulch and rocks and things and plants, then we don't have so much grass to have to water. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Thanks. Any final questions from, from Council? I just want to mention the townhomes at 92nd in downtown. I went and went to their open house, and they have three townhomes left to sale. They're all sold except for three. So, I had heard that remark made at your update, so I went to check it out for myself, and they're in good shape. So, Counselor Demont?
Yeah, I would like to, well, for this, probably for the applicant, as far as water-wise stuff, I know in a lot of your other developments, you had a lot of those kind of materials to do water savings. Can you speak to that comment?
Yes, we'd be happy to. And actually, again, not to go through the entire kind of thought of that, but generally, the exceptions are driven by being water-wise, right? That is what we're doing, is the smaller lot, more efficient landscape. So, that is why we believe it's a badge of honor. I'm going, Counselor, just to look at kind of the list of the water review here at the end. But as you know here, looking at the three ways that we attack it, the most important, 50% of the water we use in Westminster is in the yard, right, is outside use. So, actually, the specific design of water-wise, the plants, the plant scape, the way we're designing it, not with asphalt, with smaller lots that actually allow that, that's the most important thing. Then the water, water savings in the house and the energy savings. So, Counselor, our entire neighborhood and system is being designed to be water-wise, and I think that is going to be, and actually, it's why this is all happening. The other reason for those exceptions is, of course, we don't really have alley-loaded product today in a lot of Westminster, so we are providing that because it's more efficient, particularly when there's this type of a setup with the grade change. So, we again, think this is being designed exactly for the same shared principles that we all have of being more water-efficient.
Great. And then the next question, I think probably either staff or you could probably validate. So, there was comment, understandably, fire is very important. So, typically, these go through the fire department to make sure that they can do exactly what the citizen was concerned about, so just want to make sure for the public that that process did happen, and the fire department is comfortable with this layout so that they can get their equipment through there in the case of emergency.
Yes, absolutely. And I want to state it again, it's probably the most important why this neighborhood was designed the way it was, where that public street that becomes 83rd actually has a turnaround there, but then allows also that alley to basically do a full movement. So, it was designed for them, that's why those single-family homes are designed the way they are, so we could get fire to that, so we think it's really important. I'll also just say, when we make comments about density, fully respect that, but the density south of us in Greenbrier and Cobblestone and Panorama Point, that's density, right, in larger buildings. This is actually more of a spread-out, kind of more of a uniform that allows that buffer and provides new access points for fire and emergency. So, sir, that was an incredibly important part of this, and actually laid out our street network, if you will, was all about emergency access.
Great. And just for, to be thorough, does staff have anything that they want to speak on that as well? I don't see anybody from the fire department, but just so that the public hears from both sides of.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Demont. So, the fire department has reviewed this official development plan, and it does meet all of their standards and specifications for their design. 83rd itself, the cul-de-sac is not a fire department turnaround, the fire department turnaround is the alley. So, when a truck comes in, they'll, you know, loop through the alley or reverse through the alley and then back through 83rd for the connection, but the fire department is comfortable with the design.
Great, thank you very much. No more questions.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I was going to address that, so thank you. And then, I'm assuming just the grass, I'm assuming we're using buffalo grass. I know that we, I saw a lot of climate-wise landscaping already, but just want to make sure that along with the wider, water-wise plan.
Just to approve this. Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Carmelia. We are going to use a custom native sod mix for this community.
Amazing. That's even better. Thank you. And then, I do want to follow up on the question around the parks. Do our city staff want to respond to that?
Counselor, if I could ask, I just read through my notes, I'm not sure I have the question on the parks down. Could you repeat it?
Yes, the resident was concerned about the maintenance and that we might need more staff, and I'm just not, I want to clarify whether this falls under this district's concern or our city's concern.
Sure, thank you, Counselor. So, in this image you'll see up here on the screen, actually, I'll probably advance this, maybe this slide right here. So, the, the city already owns, and soon after the development is finished, will, will be responsible for full maintenance of the, the public land. The view corridor and the public land dedication, as they're labeled right now, that is currently city property. The developer is going to pay for and install the trails that you see on the site plan right there. That includes a connection to Cobblestone Park, two potential connections over to the adjoining senior living there, and then one off-site connection in Cobblestone Park that we negotiated from the developer as well. We're very proud of that. As far as the maintenance goes, that will be something that the city will need to come up with additional funding for. For this park, as it's designed and as we've had the thought process, we've leaned towards a more passive or an open space take on it right now. We do have additional space in Cobblestone Park that we're not actively using for recreation purposes, and we're actually taking the turf out and putting native grasses back in. So, we do currently have an existing space in Cobblestone Park if we wanted to expand, and this gives us additional opportunity to expand if the need arises in the future.
Okay, thank you so much.
Seeing nothing else, it is 8:47. I will close the public hearing, and do we have a motion? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands filing 4 Block 1-P-A-D-1.
Mayor Protim, second. Spin moved and seconded to approve item 10A. Is there any further discussion? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to, one, point out that this is actually a well-done development with respect to the efficiency of where the development footprint and maximizing the open space in the view corridor, and I very much appreciate that staff worked with the developer to open up this view. This is a great view corridor. I mean, the pictures show it. I appreciate the 3D modeling that has been done so that we can all understand what that looks like, and it really opens it up for people to be able to access, and that's really going to be a benefit for everybody who already lives there. And I appreciate that we have access points that are going off-site to Cobblestone Park. And so, you know, it's an infill site, and I, like most infill projects, I anticipate there being exceptions to our standards, which are again, based on greenfield development. So, this is a very challenging site, and so I appreciate that with respect to the landscape and setback exceptions in particular, that those are done well. There are, most of the, most of the sidewalks are separated throughout the development, and landscaping is used well to make, you know, create a buffer between the development and key streets. And I think the parking solution is pretty creative here, so I appreciate that we're actually, there's enough in slightly different ways. So, I just wanted to say all those things because I, you know, I wanted to note those about the exceptions, and that I think that they are reasonable, and that this is pretty well-done, so thanks.
I just know every time I drive past there and look at that site, and you come up with the plan, I have no idea how long it took you and all of the thoughts that went through, but it is going to be very nice, and thank you for taking the time to make this. Each, each parcel really has been a little bit different, and we're going to see different houses, and I think that's fantastic. So, thank you, and roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. It is 8:50, and this meeting is adjourned.